Call the Lord and stand for the lives of allegiance. I'll ask you to do a prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, who art in heaven, dear Lord God, as once again, that would come before your throne of grace, Lord God, on tonight, giving you thanks for all of your many blessings bestowed upon each and every one of us. Dear Lord God, we thank you for your Son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Dear Lord God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your favor. Dear Lord God, we ask that you continue to bless our mayor, pro tem, our city council, our city manager, our city attorney, and all the department heads on tonight, as we gather together to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon and all the city employees. In everything that we do, we pray with careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise, for it is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, we're gonna give approval of the agenda. This includes an executive session to discuss personnel matters. First and second, all those in favor. All right, approval minutes. The regular meeting November ninth, can I get a motion? Second, all those in favor, opposed? All right, well, my report's short. I've been involved in the tree lighting. You know, I was really surprised at how many people turned out. It was just nice. It was a hallmark moment. But it was, it was real nice. Just a good atmosphere. Also attended the groundbreaking for First Bank, and evidently, the guy's building it says it gonna be through in June. You know, twice the time, half again the money is kind of my construction rule, but you know, they're on the schedule, so you know, maybe we'll, we need to, are we gonna put in the budget renovations for the building?
We'll start doing that, processing that, making some possible arrangements.
I will. We need to be coming at it. They're gonna turn that over this summer.
Yeah, that'd be something we'll look into. Again, I heard the same thing you heard, June, I'm kinda, that's gonna be quick, but that's great.
So what we basically gonna do against what the defense work plan, they're talking about it with the all of the council, then we're just gonna start talking about it.
Whenever y'all want to. Yeah. On that. And this is probably not the place to talk about it, but you know, I look at what they're talking about, and I think it's a great idea, but I think that building is so big, I just, I don't, we're not grateful. I don't know that we would have enough people that would be involved with that, that would make that, use that whole building. Maybe we could do that in one of those other spaces that are vacant downtown. But also, you know, opening the parade, you know, it was, I was surprised at that many people at the parade. It's just, it's just an unusual year, and joy, and thank you for allowing me to serve as mayor pro tem. That's about me, don't have a lot.
All right. We're now gonna start off with some good things. We always try to bring positive things to our council meeting, and positive things to represent our city. So I'm gonna give it up to Chief Lane, first to introduce one of our newly police officers, and then probably get one of our kids officers included.
First, I'd like to introduce one of our homegrown, newly graduated police officers, Y'all Fray. We are very proud to have him, and what makes him so, so good to us as a department, is to know that he is from out here, and he's gonna come, and I think it's something we've wanted to do for a long time, and so we're real happy to have him. Thank you. If y'all give him a round of applause. Secondly, I wanna talk about one of our community outreach programs. We have, we've had several over the years, and this is one that Detective Tyler has kind of taken on herself, is Toys for Tots, and the past, I think she's been doing about three years now?
Four.
Four years. So it's just kind of gotten bigger and bigger, and there are a lot of families that don't have much under the Christmas tree for Christmas, but this year, Harper Fray has become a partner with the police department, and they have donated five thousand dollars to his kids. So she has, in previous years, Lord, why don't you tell them, perhaps, what, how many you had, I know this year you said you were the fewest families?
Fifty children.
Fifty children.
Um, back in 2017, when I was still on the streets, I was approached by Kristy Birborn at Dollar General here in Dillon, and she asked the Dillon Police Department to be a sponsor for the Toys for Tots, for her store. I talked it over with Chief Lane, and he graciously let me do it. So that was my first year, and it was kind of a learning year for me. 2018, we got Dollar General here in Dillon, and we got the one in Little Rock that wanted us to sponsor them. And we've been doing twenty, an average of twenty kids per year, until Harper Fray came this year and gave us five thousand dollars for toys. So now we can give about fifty kids this year.
So how do you go about getting the donations?
Being a sponsor to Dollar General, they collect the toys, I pick them up, and wrap them, and disperse them. The first year, I kind of was searching for children, so in 2018, I decided to ask the teachers at the schools, because if anybody knows, the teachers know the children they need. And that's where I get my names. Dollar General also donated, I think last year, toe buggers, and gloves, and socks, and we just split them up and took them to each elementary school, and that was real good, because they were very appreciative of it. Throughout the year, they donated all kinds of stuff. We get, sometimes we get Easter stuff, and being that we don't host the Easter egg hunt, they usually donate it to an organization in Dillon that does. Same thing for Valentine's Day, they give, like, throughout the year, they give stuff for the children of the community.
Theresa helped in Paines, maybe, yeah, we helped you also.
Okay.
You know, for our-
I do.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have a lot of people over there. You know, we, our church, this Saturday, we're gonna give out food, food boxes, about two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five dollars of food, going to seventy different homes. And you know, it's sad because, you know, the children are, but anyway, I'm not sure where we catch fish, kind of, or they say, but very good, I mean, it's just, you know, not only are you, you know, you're, you're in their, in their community for something other than something bad, you know, you're there for something good, and that, that just, you know, I think it's-
Do you actually have a personal interaction with your kids that you give presents to them?
Uh, yes, sir. Before I get to our part, I was going as a sticker lady, I always had stickers. I've got two of them, and the kids was wanting to pay me out some stickers. But yeah, I talk to the children when we deliver the presents, I talk to the mom, and sometimes I see the kids. It just depends, if they want it to be from Santa, we do it so the kids don't know. And I usually give my chief all credit, because if he wouldn't allow me to do it, then I couldn't do it, so I just tell him to thank him.
No, thank you, yeah. That's a good you hear too. That's one of the reasons I wanted to bring it up, and how we have a query, you guys were a part of the community, and then I heard today, um, I saw you've been dealing with a partner Fray, and I thought that was-
Who, who helped you?
Um, usually my partner, Monroe here, he helps me deliver. I used to do the pickups by myself, because you know, I just go to either one store one day, but when I get it all together, and I'll package him, and Monroe, over here, and Kim Carter, those two most fun.
You know, this might sound kind of weird, but you ever dice it up a little bit, you turn your lights on, going to the house there, making it look so nice, and you know-
I hadn't, I hadn't bothered that. A lot of them were donating for Santa's parade on Christmas Day, so-
Gotcha.
We just turned it into a family, and so kids can have a good present.
That's a great tool.
Thank you, thank you.
For all you did.
Thank you.
But all of you. And thank you Ricky for being there with your artists.
Yes, sir. And I would say Ricky is actually, is trying office, so Ricky said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come on in with Y'all Fray, try to get that mess up.
Thank you, guys. Basketball, youth basketball, we had registration, getting the person that was ever, we extended it through the ninth of December, in the plastic, we normally had anywhere from a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty kids, and December the tenth, I decided thirty-five kids, there's nothing we can do for basketball this year. And we lose seventy percent of what we had in the past, and there was no way we could do in-house with ourselves, once less, having enough to put on a team to play other people here. So we have, have it, today, I turned in thirty-five refunds to the folks that will be mailed out this week, we will let them know that we have, or canceled, due to lack of numbers, and I guess it's the parents concerned with COVID, and right that's so. So that will go out this week. That has been canceled for the year. And hopefully, spring, we can do other things, but who knows that today, what that may hold. Along with that, you mentioned last month, I believe, that we had canceled this year our breakfast with Santa, which was a joint effort between the city and Dillon Quanis Club, where we raised, I think that's what it was, for a hundred dollars of cash, and then a lot of gifts, and we donated that in a group that Dillon Herald, John Damian, was helping with one of the churches, we could give to those folks, but this year we haven't done. So it's good to hear again what Lori's doing, you know, to make the kids that were fortunate enough in the past to get things that we got through our breakfast with Santa, that we didn't get to do this year, and she's got extra, hopefully, we'll be able to help some other kids as well, so. Tomorrow, myself and Chief Lane, we're meeting with Inspector, who is our internet and cable provider in the city. We have been looking down for several months about wireless internet through our downtown. There is a local nonprofit that we have identified, actually, they identified us, that is looking to help with the upfront costs. We're meeting with Inspector, like you said, tomorrow, to talk about it, what those costs would be. And there may be a possibility that this nonprofit will come across and help with them for upfront costs, but we have no idea of what that cost will be this time, so tomorrow they may be able to give us that information, it's something we had talked about. It would help from a police standpoint as well, with the new laptops that we have installed into the police cars, all sixteen of those, as of today, have those installed, so having hotspots done in downtown, if we can get out of the downtown area, we'll help with that issue as well. Three new police cars that we budgeted for this year, for the one through a brand, I think, two through the budget, they're scheduled to be picked up on Wednesday of this week. Taken right six months, I have it on the order, on those, but they will be here on Wednesday. I decided today, having thought about it over the weekend, it was a decision that shouldn't have been hard to make, but it was a hard decision to make, in that our annual Christmas luncheon, which is scheduled for twenty-third, which is next Wednesday, is gonna be more so of a drop-in virtual type meal. Me that, we're having food catered in here at Wellness Center, I'm gonna set a schedule for each department to come at a particular time during the day to get their food, to take out, and that way we have less contact with all our employees in one place. We have right now, two employees that have tested positive in the last week, they're in the same building or department per se. I don't wanna take a chance where, I use the police department as an example, I don't need for half of them to really get it, and it was something that we put together, so we're gonna do a drop-in to, you'll get something here as an email or a text, probably a month or two, give you a time to come by, what time to come by, and then the other portion's gonna be a virtual portion later on to that day, to recognize, I think we got twelve or thirteen employees that will be recognized this year for their years of service, and then we also have our drawings that we usually do at Christmas. So we're, ten is in charge of that virtual, so we're trying to figure out how to get that taken care of. So it's gonna be a little different, but I think it's the right way to do it, just to keep everybody safe, and make sure that we're not at cause for spread, because we're enjoying a little social time. Each week, I preach to the department heads, and they preach to their employees, to do what they need to do, to be safe. And we've been fortunate since March, I think, six at the most may have tested positive in, what is it now, nine months? But part of me believes that there's gonna be more.
Right now, it is red hot, and we talked about this, it's red hot in Dillon, and part of the problem that we had was, is that we enjoyed a long period of time where we didn't see a lot of cases. If you don't have cases, you don't have immunity. If you don't have immunity, when you get cases that come in, it lights up, and that's kind of where we are. I think we had eight or ten new cases today in the office, and not just one, you know, testing, so.
And they, we have a testing site here through N U S C, any parking lot, and you can hear money, variety, twelve to two. They're not very busy, but I go by First Baptist Church, last couple of days I've been, but they've been very busy testing people. And again, I've got one that tested positive last week, really what, having symptoms, making emergency room for something else, and the protocol, I'm assuming, is while you're there, you've been tested.
Oh, no, no, you have to have a little bit of suspicion. You know, some people say I had an exposure, and that, you know, that raises a flag, but most of them have to have a little suspicion.
How can that people ask me, and Dr. Wallace, you can ask this question pretty much. Will y'all, your patients that you see, will you notify your patients when their vaccine gets in, to be able to administer the vaccine?
Yeah, when it is, when it is of public, yeah, we, we have, and I don't know the other practice, we have Phone Tree, and basically, I can tell Phone Tree, you know, contact the patients, and Phone Tree will either, you know, call them, or send them an email, whatever that, pre-arranged. I don't know if all the, I don't know if Dillon family does that.
But to follow up on your question, and let me say, I understand, so when it becomes available, we know it's available right now for first responders, which we haven't-
As far as I know.
You haven't heard anything?
Do you think when he has to go order?
Oh, okay. He can do, uh, Dillon's-
Mercy management.
Okay.
Mercy management.
So, mercy management. So, but for the public, for the public in general, when it becomes available, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, and I just want to note, is it possible the city of Dillon could put something in the paper that, you got the vaccine, somebody got it.
Here are the places that have it.
So how's it determined who gets it, at that point?
Well, I think that-
I mean, you gonna be over here, again, you over running by?
Yeah, there's, when it comes out, when Moderna's comes out, right now, the Pfizer product is, you gotta keep it at minus ninety-four degrees, and logistically, that is just tough.
Minus ninety-four?
Minus ninety-four degrees, yeah. And Moderna is coming out where it doesn't have to be kept that way, and I think they're gonna have a million vaccines, so that's a half a million people, because it's two-step. But I think there's some that are coming out, probably in the spring, that'll be, you know, a single dose, but what I'm getting at is, is the Pfizer, the Pfizer, you know, that probably, logistically, isn't gonna, isn't gonna meet them. It's gonna be difficult for us to vaccinate the large population with that type of vaccine.
Because it'd be at ninety-four.
Correct. But the Moderna one, which is, right now, they'll probably get their approval this week, that one, they, they say they can have a hundred million unit, a hundred million doses out by, you know, mid-January.
I was gonna ask the stupid question, how do you inject something that's ninety-four degree blood?
Well, it has to be worn and then used immediately, oh, yeah, yeah, that's true.
What, what type of temperatures are Moderna?
Yeah, that's, that's why, that's gonna be easier to distribute, just logistically, to the general population.
Well, if I could get back to the date of this question, I mean, what you were saying, somebody ordered, like for instance, Dr. Wallace gets the vaccine, and it's open to the public or whatever, we can't notify the city employees that he's got the vaccine, and they can get vaccinated?
I guess you could, and again, if, you know, could be Jay David, doctor, if they know it's patients, I think you'll look at your patients before you'll look at just the, I don't know that.
Yeah. It's something that we really haven't had, you know, a pecking order.
But I'm assuming if your office makes it, all the other offices get a pecking order?
Right, it would be, it would, it probably isn't gonna be favorites that way, it's gonna be favorites, you got a pretty bad disease collection, you definitely should be tiered before my forty-year-old friend I play golf with.
Or fifteen-year-old kid.
Correct, correct. You know, it has to go to those people that, that-
High risk.
If they get it, they're not gonna be in a good place. And you know, that being said, again, obesity seems to be the worst risk factor for poor outcome. I've had chronic lung disease patients, I've got people now that are on immunosuppressive therapy, that you would think it would just run wild, and they're fine, so.
So your, your officer basically is getting those that are overweight.
Overweight is, is just-
But then they have other issues, though, don't they?
Most of, well, most of them-
I mean, overweight, you have diabetes, or-
And honestly, I mean, that's what the virus was designed to get rid of, the poor health and overweight, I mean, that's, I mean, that's exactly what that virus was designed to do, eliminate that population from China.
Last thing I have is, over the Christmas holiday, and New Year's, city offices will be closed on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-eighth, and then on January first for New Year's, and that's all I have left time.
Glenn, I got a couple more questions. The police car wise, I know you said we got three new cars going in, how, now that puts everybody in a police car, how many do we got in case something was to break down, or something, I mean, how many we got reserved?
We have two or three.
We're gonna keep three in reserve, we wish, I think we'll actually have one more, but I think we can possibly get rid of all the front wheels.
I thought we budgeted for four.
That's what you did, you're giving it all.
Huh?
We budgeted two, we got one through a grant.
I thought we budgeted four, because it was like, like forty thousand apiece, and um-
Two, two hundred grand, yeah.
It was just two in the launch of a grant, probably. And we didn't budget any money this year for it, because it wouldn't come out in the next budget, when the loan would take effect.
But not last year, we got some.
You bought two last year, or?
When all-
The last budget year? Two prior to that.
What did we increase?
We bought these four prior to that. We bought four out of the drug fund.
Fuck drug money, yes. But I thought that we increased the budget in the police department by some, uh-
Well, by car. I mean, we, 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 we didn't budget any vehicles this year, even though we were getting them, the loan that we were borrowing money for, the first payment's not due until July of twenty fifth, so that's pretty-
So the police budget.
And can you-
Sixty-one hundred, we did capital out, led by five hundred dollars.
But that was to pay for-
No.
No?
No, we've, we've-
I thought we have, we have four police cars.
But not, but that's for previous years.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
And that's the thing, we did, we bought four last year.
We made it part of permanent budget, so that every seven years, we would cycle through all of our cars.
But we didn't budget-
But, so the cars that we got, that's being purchased now, this due Wednesday.
Yeah, I remember this.
Yeah, I took that to talk about, I mean, two and one grand.
But did you, did you?
With the budget that's budgeted this year for previous cars that we borrowed money from, that's a budget, and, and, go ahead.
I think we budgeted two cars this year, and one through a grant. Is that about that? In this budget, we're in.
But-
And we did the last year, we did four, but that's a payment we budgeted.
That's correct.
Right, so we did the four police cars last year, we bought, we financed them for five years.
That's correct, and that's part of this year's budget.
Yeah, and then the capital is two vehicles, that we'll buy out of general fund, and one out of the grant.
That is correct, that is correct.
So we got seven new police cars in the last two years.
I don't think we got the two last year. We got, we bought four, actually, we had four police cars flooded in the hurricane, remember that? That was, that was insane.
This is the police car to be paid for.
Y'all remember a conversation where we said that every seven years, we will cycle through our whole police force?
We talked about it, but we didn't, I don't think we budgeted doing that this year, because, again, it didn't-
Forty, four cars a year, we got twenty-eight cars.
Why would I know these numbers?
I was gonna say, did we talk about it? But I do know that the three cars, or the two cars that we purchased this year in this budget, are not actually being paid to the loan until July of next year, twenty twenty-one. What's in the budget now are from previous loans of vehicles that we have purchased. Because if we'd budgeted more than two cars, we'd got more than two cars, not counting one in three through a grant.
But you say in the last year, we budgeted for four, not this, not this year.
We bought four.
We bought four. We bought four this year. We got three more than seven cars in the last two years.
Yeah, give or take, yeah.
Give or take. So in your fleet, where does that put you at as far as your oldest car now?
Crown D.
Two thousand five Crown D.
And our goal was not to have any car older than seven years.
That would be a great one, I guess.
Huh?
That would be a great one.
That's a goal that we, we obligated to. We put in the budget that, I mean, how much do we increase the, your budget?
I don't think we increased as much at all.
Well, we had a-
I think it was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
The officers he lost, he had a surplus in his budget. We talked about that, because he had a downfall in his, in his officers. And he was trying to get some officers back on the force. We had a surplus in the budget, but we talked, I-
Y'all gonna come back next week?
I would come out in January.
And you gonna say, Dr. Wallace was right.
I'll pull out my budget notes.
I mean, I know, it was a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, we increased the budget of the police, and it was specifically to buy four cars.
Now, we didn't, we didn't do that.
See, last year- See, last year, we budgeted to make the payment on the four cars.
For the funny change of the drug car.
Yeah, and then this year we budgeted for capital outlay eighty-five thousand.
Well, I don't wanna belabor it. But I'll, I'll go back in my budget notes and we'll talk about it.
Laptop, you said you got them all in the cars now. Great, that's great. My other question is the laptop training. How are we training our police officers to be able to work the laptops?
Kim's doing that with them. She, she set up all laptops, she's installed. Set them up and, and help the officer. They already use the program. So they do that in the program. We are not currently running the D O T. We, we plan to bring that online in January. Cause there's some things that Ryan's got to state in order to get it for a weekend. Or we can run the D O T.
But the, the police officer actually do a report in the neighborhood?
They do a report in the car, they can do a report in the car, print it out and give it to the police.
That is correct.
And they're happy about it. And then hopefully you go do that. Nine-one-one, the county was looking at his plan to be able to, us connecting with them in the car to pull up John Yeller or whatever to give us information.
What's the issue?
How quick?
Yeah, but since you, since you discussed it, I mean, I mentioned before about grant money for cameras at major intersections of Dillon and you had to have wires. Uh, that's a possibility, a possibility, that's something to look at.
That's a possibility.
Cause I'd like to see that.
No, you said that, again, that is the key. And depending on what spectrum tells us tomorrow, how many of those can go in, should do certain things.
That right there is very expensive. They do cameras and stuff, you'd have to get a grant somewhere.
Well, that is, and storey information.
They've got their whole. You need to have a grant.
They also have, they also are electric city, they can do something with their. And, and gas.
You can tell by the detail there.
Yeah. But no, I'm talking about the city of Venice, though, they have their own electricity and gas.
Colorblind.
Yeah. Um, that's all I have.
All right.
Um. Jim?
General Fund, our total cash account, one million nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. And our revenues, we brought in three hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars more in this year's budget than we did in two thousand and nineteen. And that is due to grants and, uh, getting in some business license from a municipal association. Let Washington money was hired this year.
Any liabilities against that that we haven't paid out?
No, we, we paid, we paid out that, that we have. Now, we did, did get into, we got that ten thousand, we ain't done anything that that yet.
Yeah, I mean, that's a grant for.
Yeah, we ain't done that at all. But, you know, the, the fund and the pine strip, that's what that is. Hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and nineteen on that. Okay, then we got our water and sewer.
Year-to-date expenses were down, um, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Yes, it was usual garbage truck we bought last year, but for two, two hundred and fifty-two thousand.
That was a playoff one, wasn't it?
That, that's what we purchased.
That was a full amount.
Yeah, that's full amount. General Fund is expensed out when you buy capital equipment. So that's what, that's the difference in that.
Okay, and, you know, when I first read that, I said, boy, I feel good that we've got like a half a million dollar, uh, positive experience with two hundred and sixty thousand dollars less, less expense and three hundred and eleven thousand more revenue. And it was, uh, disintegrated before my eyes. So, uh, 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 of that, um, expense, um. Anyway.
Well, the revenues from the county, that hasn't been disrupted in any part at this point. You don't see a problem with our funding from the county?
Tax perks?
Yeah.
Not in the day and week.
So Ryan got to pay the diggers from a year ago.
Well, you figure right now, we've only collected a little less than four percent on property taxes. But that's another number in December, January.
That's in January fifteenth.
Well, now I do know, um, and I'm working on my audit, but our, um, taxes that is left on the receivable went up about thirty thousand from the previous year to June two thousand.
And what created that?
There's, I mean, no corrections. People didn't pay it. In other words, our receivable went up.
Didn't know it was an option.
Hey, well, I mean, the county collects for us, so everyone, you know. But I did notice it went up about thirty thousand.
But we've also, I'm assuming this, we've also collected, let me say, two thousand in delivery tax from the previous year.
They must have a lot on the books.
Well, what are you talking about it? I guess this is for you, Ben. Your permits, you in a surplus now, and you budgeted for thirty-five thousand. What's, what's got the uptick on that? Was it the good in the city?
Yes, sir, we have a lot of projects, uh, new projects that's being constructed. We have, um, Jabs fireworks, we got, uh, Speedway starting. There's probably about twelve projects that's actually, is gonna get kicked off. I would say anywhere between now and February. So we, that revenue was steadily increased because of the.
Well, I mean, you saw that myself.
Well, that project, Jabs, I'm sorry, that property's already annexed into the city.
Yes, sir.
Where he's built.
Yes, sir.
Does your department here get to see his budget report?
That's it.
Now, the rest of the land out there around it, it's, it's not annexed anymore.
It isn't.
It is?
When you say around, you mean around.
The rest of the area that was torn down.
Yes, yes. And what's behind it's not, the old, um, the old motel, that's the, that's what I'm saying.
That's not.
That's not what?
That is, I think so.
Yeah, that's it. And.
But you're talking back towards Main Street, behind it is not.
Where the, where the tram used to be, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, that's.
But that's still the district that we created for tattooing and.
Yes, sir.
That is correct. The old William King or whatever it was called, that scene, and then.
Well, if that needed to be changed in the future, we wouldn't have a problem with that. We have stuck it, bumped it in.
Yes, sir.
So you foresee that double issue again?
Oh, yes, sir, we, we have a lot of projects that have started.
Hmm.
I, I, well, I don't know if it's a double, but. Of those, of that thirty-seven thousand we've collected, all of that's already been collected from Jabs, correct?
Yes, sir.
Cause they're about to complete it. Has First Bank Contractor paid any permits yet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so he's doing it.
Yes, sir.
Um, Speedway has not.
Has not.
They haven't paid anything yet.
No, sir. Quick Trip has not.
Yeah. So I mean, there's. I don't know that it was double, but, and we normally budget thirty, thirty-five thousand annually in that line.
I'm just curious what the uptick was, cause you only six months into your budget.
Five months.
You know, you got a surplus there.
Has X-Meets reached that many yet on their permit?
Yes, sir, they've reached out for a permitting process, um, but from what I understand, they're trying to decide whether or not to renovate the building as is or, um, build a new building from ground up. So that's kind of where we're waiting in here back for them.
Is that a bigger building, I hope?
Haven't seen the building plan, so.
They used to do, they do a lot of those.
And if that's the case, if they did demolish and rebuild, that's a whole lot more permit money than they bear.
Is there any truth in a restaurant's coming?
Haven't heard anything about that.
Hard to open a restaurant, but all this.
No, I didn't mean to do a restaurant, I heard, don't, don't, I'm not what you saw, that was true, not true.
They had to talk to them.
Yes, sir.
Water and sewer, our total on cash accounts, all accounts is three million, six hundred thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Our difference in our revenues for two thousand and twenty and two thousand and nineteen is two hundred and one thousand, five hundred and ten dollars more in two thousand and nineteen, and that is due to the grants that we received. We had the C D B K grant, the RIA grant, and the FIML grant. And then the expense, um, the difference is three thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We've had more in two thousand and nineteen than we did in two thousand and twenty. Our stormwater, our cash account is eight five thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. Our total revenues versus in twenty versus two thousand and nineteen is up two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. Our expenses is up in two thousand and twenty versus two thousand and nineteen by sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and three dollars. And that's due to we have hired two new employees and, you know, the operations of it. Plus the back truck, we got one payment left in October of twenty-twenty-one and it'll be paid for. Then the golf course, our cash account sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. Our revenues versus our, um, twenty versus nineteen, I'm gonna take out, I took out the transfer of the funds just to give you an idea of where we were at. We took in ours for two thousand and twenty, a hundred and twelve thousand, eighty-three dollars. In two thousand and nineteen, it was seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which was thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars more in twenty than we did in nineteen.
It's busy.
This is usually September, October, November, or some of our worst months. Those three months, we average right at twenty thousand, or we normally average about twelve thousand.
Couple of things contribute that, lack of football and lack of anything else to do. In good luck.
Our expenses was up forty-two thousand, eight hundred and nine hundred dollars in twenty than it was in two thousand and nineteen. That's due to some equipment that we had to repair or purchase on.
What is the back truck payment, you never have a payment?
One.
Back in front?
Fifty-eight thousand. No, it's sixty, let me see, the backer truck, it is sixty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars.
You said we got one payment left.
One payment left, that'll be paid off in October of next year.
October twenty-twenty-one?
Yes.
So if this right here is the stormwater, did we accumulate about eleven thousand dollars a month?
Eleven thousand.
So once we pay the back truck off and we start accumulating money, what are we planning on doing as far as the city to help alleviate the stormwater?
Well, that'll be used, the idea from the beginning was, that's the end, it was max for grant, things of that nature. And I meant to bring up in my report, when you mentioned stormwater, I didn't think about it at the time, but we had three meetings in November, um, not very well attended. You think one, we'd have a lot of tents, but we had flooding. The day of, I didn't have anybody really show up for, for it. However, you know, the plan is that the timeline, I think he was here in November when he talked about, or October, is to have the timeline completed with the study in early summer, I think it was. And then at that point in time, we'll make a determination, when I say we, to cancel what, what our part is gonna be in that study. What areas gonna be the most, went for the bank of the world. Uh, what shocked me that we saw that last storm in November. The area that we always were concerned about was the least amount of, of water in any by jar or river. And that's what that lady called the bottom, is that not? On the south side by, by Old Dillon Woodwork, that drained well. The canals were draining good, um. We had areas that we knew had some issues that we never got to see really. Was areas, East Jefferson Street, eleven hundred block here. That whole neighborhood was running well. Um, I've never seen it that way, but it has been that way previous time, they tell me. And just so happy the engineers were here that day, they got to see it as well, so we're looking at that. And it's just different areas that, that we were able to see, that we haven't been able to see. Because usually, it's after a hurricane, it's during the night, you go out and see, you still don't get what you see in the daylight, so. That was the good thing of that particular storm was we really got to see some things and they got to see some things. We still know we have issues, but to back up, those, those monies will be known to the employees and, and operation and maintenance costs that can be used from that, and that was the whole purpose of that.
Where is the D O T at? What did you got to do with it? Like, you know, like maybe on the, what moved the diner, Carmichael? And back there, that be did.
I think Carmichael, they have no responsibility. And, and the reason I say that, Carmichael's not owned by the state, it's owned by the city. So I doubt they had any. And if that ditch was there before Carmichael was built, that was before my council, I don't know. Um, Mark looks a king to all of those of theirs. Pretty much every ditch that you see alongside of the road is owned and, and supposedly maintained by D O T. They don't have the manpower to do all of it. That's the reason we do it, um, as much as we can. But there, the ditches are not there to drain your yard, my yard, your yard. They're there to drain the roads. And that's all they're, you know, that's all they're concerned about. As long as the road is open, the ditches are doing what it's supposed to do. That answer?
Any other major places discovered that they're research?
No, that's nothing at this point in time, but they're still in the field doing that stuff.
Anything as far as the canal on the west side? In the Jacksonville area?
Though we, part of that, again, is, that is part of D O T. We haven't gotten to it yet to do anything. One of the goals is just to get all the trash we can get out of, due to the flood. Cause if you go, you can see cubs and, you know, you know, trash, literally trash. I've had D O T to look at on the west side of town. That's true. Stewart, McLeod, that, and that's just so flat, they tell me they're not, they can do that one with that. Now, what they do, I don't know. So, you know, we try to do as much as we can, with limited knowledge that we have, you know, for a region here and goes. But not for D O T, but, but, again, the local residents in here, they need the power, if we ask for their help. They do provide us with high feedings and things of that nature. But we have to replace it, let's all school it, so they just ask us to do it.
All right, Jim?
Okay, on the, um, two percent hospitality fund, our account is a million, ninety thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Our revenues, we had taken in seventeen thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars more in twenty-twenty than we did in twenty-nineteen. Um, our payments coming up in February are two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars on there. We got paid February, and then when we finish our audit, every part, General Fund paid for the wellness center, they will take that much out of, out of two percent and move it into General Fund, transfer it back in. So I don't know exactly how much that be yet, but it'll, it'll be more than it has been.
Basically, we're making payment and then we take it out of the two percent, right?
The two, the payment comes out of two percent.
Okay.
What she talking about is reimbursement, the wellness center, uh, operations are paid out of General Fund. And then at the end of the audit year, whatever that.
Oh, yeah. We'll take that right now.
We reimburse them, right, in General Fund.
How many payments is left on the wellness center?
Four.
After the. After the, maybe four. It'll be paid down.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
Danny, if you can hear new reports from the U S C D or. Danny, have you got any reports from the USC Bureau that shows our GDP for our area?
No, sir.
When do you usually get that?
Usually we have to call them.
You get it right before you do your licensing, right?
We used to.
I was just wondering how far our GDP fall now since we got a lot of these large businesses closed.
Do you think?
How much, I can't find it, I know it's important, how much money's in the hospital?
Five thousand, million, ninety, ninety-nine.
So, you know, this is the question I want to present to council. Since I've been on council, we've only keep six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars in there. And we only make it one payment. There's two, I guess there's a two-fold question. Why can't we make an extra payment or we're trying to do something to enhance this wellness center? Yeah, you know, I know we talked about it in the past, but the money's just sick.
It is, and it wasn't a bad idea. I mean, right now, as, as Dr. Wallace mentioned, current fund about two million eighty-nine thousand dollars.
We had talked about doing the pool, you know, doing the indoor pool. And, and I, I think two things that, and I don't know, maybe that should be in my mayor protest thing or I don't know. But I think, I think we need some long-term planning on what we're gonna do, we're gonna do the pool. And what are we gonna do with all that information we got for downtown? I mean, is there any?
That'd be something we do.
We got any action on that?
I have not, they have not submitted to me their, their final report.
Okay.
So I don't have nothing to give to you guys yet.
Did they get our money?
They get it.
Well, you see, you know, we've spent a lot of money on that, so, you know, what are we gonna do with the information?
Now, that's something y'all decided, you know, it isn't, y'all have brought up about the first bank building, you know, and we really decided that's what we're gonna do with, what we're gonna do with it. But if you go back and, and it's one of the things, well, two of the things really we bring up tonight and under resolutions is, you know, there's property out here that I would love for us to purchase. Directly behind us, I've talked to that, those owners now and seems like they have a good price. I totally get that, them to purchase the year, come back with some sort of, um, proposal. Cause I, I've envisioned from day one, once this was built here, having an amphitheater and, and things behind us.
Dog, we back to the interstate?
It's not to the interstate, but width-wise, between us, the property that's owned by someone else and there's another tract of property and then there's the river. And then there's a piece of property that we're setting out as a donation on the other side of the river that puts up to the golf course. You know, if we could get this, it could be forty acres that we could develop. Doesn't have to be major stuff, walking trail and amphitheater, I mean, just, you know, different kind of things. Nature type deals and if we can get the next property, don't have to be all of it. I think it's like a hundred and some acres or two hundred acres. I don't know if we want all that, but enough to where we could get from there to the river. You know, that, that'd open up a lot of things. Think about it, there's really no river access except what the county has here and there. That there could be a lot of things you could go on there to. Water attracts a lot of things, but good rates.
Going back to what Dr. Wallace just said, you know, action plan. I mean, I really think we need to push their buttons to make sure they get this stuff to us so we can actually start moving forward with this stuff. That's, because like you just said, first bank, they're gonna be, have to build a building.
Supposedly, yeah. Cause you know, the original thought there was they'd be eighteen months out and it looks like more so twelve months out once we signed that agreement. All right. All right, citizens, report, anybody wanna say anything? You got something?
Yeah. Mayor, go tell council, good evening.
Good evening.
For lack of better words, it's been over a year and a half since the mayor's election. I don't know what's the governor's guidance is, uh, people in town, all this city don't know what's the guidance is, but we need to know something. Are we gonna continue to go like we going now for the next four years and then have an election? When we have city, if we had a city mayor, that Dylan, I think the city of Dylan, could act actually function. Sure, you're doing a good job as protesting, but other people looking at them without a city mayor, that's just another hurdle we got to come over. I don't know if the governor gave you any guidance or, or the governor don't know any guidance or what. It's got, April will be two years since, nothing happened.
That's beyond us.
No, sir. There've been no guidance, no information shared with us other than the original information which was suspension and that's all we can give you.
Not all we can tell you, it's all we know, that, that there's a difference.
And, and also in our form of government, which I think you understand, is the mayor, and I hate to use this word, it's just a figure of him. So, I mean, but sure, we, we miss it as well. But nothing's been communicated to us, one, one bit. So I, I, we're in limbo as you are. Anyone else?
All right, old business non, new business, um, resolution number zero seven two zero to acquire certain property from RJTS LLC.
This is a property that we discussed last month, um, on the other side of the Little Peabody River, about a hundred acres. Wants to be donated to the city. Right now it's just a clear cut, a hundred acres of lot. They burned off a lot of that logs and stuff. I, I think, again, there's nothing that we can actually build these buildings on, but I think it opens up a potential to grow quality of life as far as.
It's too late.
That's not part of this. Those are not a part of it, that's on another track, but just another way of opening up quality of life for people to have access to, to the river and everything of that nature.
You say there's no structures on there or availability of life or anything like that?
No, not at all.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Oppose. Motion curious.
Resolution number zero eight dash two zero to acquire certain property from Mackie and Benjamin Hayes.
Now, this one came about, um, actually after our last meeting. Trichemis or tri, what is it called, Trinity Behavior here, purchased three or four acres on the other side of us here on Commerce Drive, uh, from his gentleman. They, the owners of that, of some of the property wanted to keep a, a portion of that land between us and them as a way for them to get to their property as a driveway per se, which is behind us. Trinity is interested in annexing, we interested in Trinity Annex, but I can't annex them without touching. So I've talked to Mr. Hayes, Mackie Hayes and Ben Hayes. They agreed to donate this piece that was sixty-six feet wide and roughly was six hundred feet deep, um, to give to the city with the understanding if they wanted to get to point A to point B from Commerce Drive to their property, they could still use that piece of property that they're gonna donate to us to use to get back to theirs and have no issue with that, cause what we wanna do is add annex.
Okay. I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
When is Trinity planning on starting to build?
As a launch builder, I think is your contractor, um, I will reach out to them tomorrow and tell them if you can still have to pay for it. Add annex purposes and then that's permanent. All right, uh, pay tax funding recommendations, I think we gotta shoot a paper there. We have that along with requests from each one of these folks, as I said in my letter, you know, we did this in June, folks on this committee have been crazy company, um, they can't. So they didn't finally talk to me, but by doing, by following and, you know, they did that last week. There was total request for eight six thousand five hundred dollars, or we only have about forty-one thousand, so we knew that wasn't gonna work. So they came back with what they recommended and New York Patrick's with that, which was each entity that requested these funds, what they were requesting it for. Those have been the last ones for the St. Patrick's Day event, which is an event that we usually do in the city. That's in there as well.
I see where the community alliance is asking for money. I bring up this question here is, um, they started the facade, we weren't able to give them any money because it was against the statute or the law or something, can you feel me?
They didn't.
The twenty-four thousand dollars we have locked in the budget for the facade, they wanted to take that money. They wanted to oversee the money and they wanted, you know, go out and get the applications requested for the new business, new renovation, then submit it. We, that was against the law, am I on the right track, Danny?
No, y'all already did that. We don't give them the money.
They don't give money, they just help with this.
But this would be just simple at that.
Right. It's right here, the money they're requesting, that you got twelve thousand five hundred dollars, is that money that you're gonna give them and put in their account?
To do certain projects that they.
So that's not against the law?
No, because they are, they, they are promoting tourism. They're promoting, uh, tourism and cultural events. But if they do, if they do anything within the city that brings people in, and that would be tourism, brings people in, I mean, that's, this is just regulations, but they do often. But they can't just put it in their pocket like any other, you know, the issue.
No, I'll tell you, the real problem I do have is, um, you know, I know we had a grand coordinator focus, but we, we've got to really find somebody who, who can write grants, who can, who's an event coordinator. I mean, you're really gonna have to eventually put it in your budget, I mean, it's gonna cost to get somebody to sell them. I mean, these people here, they're business owners, and I'm not saying they can't get an event here or whatever. Give me somebody who can be dedicated to being able to see that and, and to sell us.
Well, one thing, this is, this is not an ongoing thing.
I understand.
This is this year, in, in order to do what you wanna do, and I, I'm not opposed to that at all, but we, we go out and budget that and we come around the budget time and I, I think we should try to budget in an employee that does that.
But, you know, I wanna go a little further, cause you, you talk weird about it, and you, and you had people that interviewed you, they won seventy thousand dollars. Okay? But I'm gonna be honest with you, I could do a hotel out there, there's thirty storefronts, empty storefronts. It's just demoralizing, you know? And whatever this council decides to do, that's up to y'all, but I'm, I'm just saying, we've got to put it in the budget somewhere to be able, well, we can sell dealing, we gotta promote, we can't.
And, and, and yeah, I agree one percent, but this is totally different.
I understand, but for this year alone, like you're saying about Wallace, you know, and we end up, you know, voting for them to do it. For future references down the road, I would like to see us go a different route and, and, you know, have it in the budget for us to get a coordinator, who knows the whole nine yards.
One thing, one. Any other question?
Need a motion to, um, um, go on with the recommendations of the pay tax.
Now, I would like to, to amend that. I don't know anybody that's listening here is actually gonna be able to do what they said they wanna do in the next six months. Because of COVID issues.
Right.
That being said, I, I would like for it to be in the motion, if it's not done, they got to either return the money back to us or we don't give them the money until they got something scheduled. Because.
Fifty percent the schedule, fifty percent the completion.
Because if, if not.
It goes back to the state.
We have to give it back to the state.
Go write a check back to the state for what we have done.
If we go ahead and give them whatever the amount may be for each one, if they don't do anything, we're still on the hook for it.
Now, then we can look at this from, this is money for last year.
This, this, this money is, is, can only go up to the two years.
So what we're looking at is what they did last year up to June the thirtieth. If they did some of this, this stuff.
None of this has been done yet, none just been done. And, and it's just that we are, again, don't know what, what spring is gonna hold for where people can do things, I mean.
It's gonna be summer before this is.
I just, I just wanted to be noted that.
They can't spend it, it has to come back.
All the projects that they said they were gonna do.
The public farmers market, they're not doing that yet.
They do that, yeah, whether at this time of year, they do it, what, April to September? Yeah, I mean, they did it all last year during, because they met certain guidelines that were put in place by the governor to do it.
And you could, there's an half script, right? You get the whole three thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's what they were questioning. They gave you the whole three thousand.
And that can only be spent for advertising.
But I just wanted to.
So they gonna have to submit to you exactly what they're doing for, you release the manual?
No, they, they, they've submitted that already. That's been submitted, it's just that.
If they don't do it, the money needs to come back.
It does.
And then it will make three thousand.
So the motion needs to be made that in order for them to get the money, they either have to be completed or.
And they got something scheduled.
Right, got something scheduled, it's got to be completed and done or return the money back.
Pretty much.
So we're gonna write the checks and then?
Well, we either write the check or we can hold it until they.
And if it's not completed, that's.
I would just say, I would say, let's give you a percentage of upfront money and then when you complete the project, we give you the rest.
Cause in the previous years, we, when y'all, you know, passed.
We've been burdened too many times.
Well, not only this, but being that what we are going through. You know, I'm, I'm just afraid that, our own, I mean, just like last year, you know, we had the council, the, the, um, Main Street festival. Um, and we may have to cancel St. Patrick's Day, I mean, I don't know how that's gonna look out, but.
But we are, we, we run the St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, we do, but, I mean, if we don't have it.
Right.
I don't try to, I hate to make the war of money, but I just want you to be aware, I guess.
They can't notify the city when they're actually gonna have it again, not like you can pay them the money.
They can, that's what they can. I mean, there's one or two in here that's got grand plans of doing certain events, but right now people aren't booking anything. So I, I just don't know that we should write a check.
Right, we have to notify them. Why don't we just wait to then notify your name, tower of it?
I have no problem with that, that would be a whole lot of.
But now, money's gonna go back by June the thirtieth of next year, but this one is not, it's been, it's going back.
No, you only can hold it for two years.
And so it's going back, we, we have it for two years.
But I don't wanna have to send it back when I don't have it, if that makes.
Cause if you're notified of it, you can give a hundred percent of it.
And then if, if for some reason or another, people don't show up or, or ahead, that's one thing, but.
Can I get a left, man, uh, uh? One more thing, I lost, I got one question. Let's say that, for instance, the heart thing, okay? They're requesting five thousand dollars. But you come to the point, Jan, you said if we don't get the money to them, it goes back to the state. Can you give them more than what they requested, have we got more in the park at that time? Can they get, can they get ten thousand instead of the five thousand?
Well, if, if, if they don't get what they asked for in the most.
But if you got the money left in the park instead of going back to the state, they're getting ready to hold the event, can they get more money than what they requested?
If, if, if the.
No one else is gonna use it.
If, if the advisory board recommends or y'all have passed it.
As long as what they're doing passes, frankly. And qualifications, and some of this stuff is only advertising and stuff like that, and it means, and I correct you. So if they don't have ten thousand advertising, then you can't pay.
Well, that's one portion of that, you can, you can put on events, um, certain events that draw tourism if, you know, that's what the money's. Well, that's one portion of that, you can, you can put on events, uh, certain events that draw tourism, if, you know, that's what the money's intended for.
All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion. And then we'll be notified.
Yeah, we'll be notified before we distribute it.
Yes, sir.
That they have to request money.
Is it gonna be, but is it gonna be at fifty percent or a hundred percent?
We'll do a hundred percent.
So if you're notified of an event, at that time, you'll. Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Passes.
Um, council members report, John?
Um, I'm gonna go back to the town again, um, we talked about the building, we, that was about to fall over, they could find it, it's bought, we got behind the, the old motel, we just go out, we want the building, where we want it. Right there in front of the councilation, the building.
Oh, 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 that's just broken.
Um, did we ever get a finalization on anything as far as?
Jack had put in a call to the attorney that they gave us a name or two pretty much, they were working on the estate. Jack, the last time I talked with him, he called the attorney, and the attorney decided he'd call me back, but I, as a last one, he didn't bring nothing back.
How about the one that's condemned in front of, um, the United Methodist Church?
In the house?
Yeah. Old Cookers Field Hall?
That was sold, Alan Watts purchased that and you issued him.
Yes, sir, it's been condemned again.
So, give me understanding of recourse of what we gotta do now, another year is gonna be sitting there in front of the, the church?
We did, I signed papers on seven or eight.
Yes, sir.
Of the properties, uh, last week that for us to carry down, um, that, and these were ones that have been since two thousand six, two thousand seventeen. So, yeah, it'd be a problem. And then on that one, is that, is that considered a resident or a business?
Business.
So we would carry that and then we have contracts, so that could be a different time period.
Uh, uh, my other question is, can you reach out to Alan and see if he'll carry the building out? I mean.
Yes, sir.
I don't know why, if you do it. If you'll reach out, if you need me to try to have his answer when we come back next morning?
Yes, sir.
Um, so Esther's office, have they talked to us anymore about the motel, or just get the motel? Still waiting on that. Um, let's see, can I shift it? Okay, that's all I got.
Jake? The, um, first thing I want to mention while thinking about it, the Christmas lights that are round, around the post, like down Martin Luther King. Why is that not done on the post down Main Street?
We have, we've reached on those, but.
Could it wouldn't look better if it streamed all the way to the base?
It's a good idea.
If people put more light.
I mean, we added those this year on Martin Luther King.
It looks really good.
And we took, we had some old ones that used to be on, down by the railroad track, that we had there, and half of those didn't work, and some of my old ones, those, they were about twenty-five years old, so we decided just to wrap them in garland light.
I was just, just suggestion, I think if it was all the way down.
It's possible that.
It would look really great.
And, and, and the decorations.
Everybody's gonna go all the way to downtown though.
No, I'm talking about it's wound or, or, you know.
And it's up to the, the, the Main Street that way as well.
It just looks good looking down, if you see the pole line, I know the reaping top is, is.
And those are, those are twenty years old, so we've got to look at doing something there as well.
And I guess, um, some of the domes on top I've seen are even missing or broken.
We've got one that we don't know what happened to it, that Duke Kennedy has been notified about, I know the light worked on it, but the cover's gone, that's at Cleveland and Railroad Avenue area.
The reason I'm saying that, I think it did more light as far as the Christmas on our side a little bit, but anyway.
Good idea.
I just wanted to reiterate what Dr. Wallace was speaking about at the very beginning of our meeting, um, tree lighting is great, and I enjoyed it, even though it's very cold night, but uh, the, the alliance was there, and I think they served, um.
They served hot chocolate.
Hot chocolate, and I really appreciated the building. Um, we had a pretty good group. And, um, a lot more than I thought we would have, as cold as it was.
Well, I think it had a lot to do, I think it had a lot to do with the last minute entertainment that popped up in our lap, and what we had scheduled fell through because of school, not, really not being in school on a daily basis, that didn't work out, um, and then that little dance group, you know, that probably. Kids bringing out parents, I guess, care what you do, you know, they bring, so, yeah, they had a lot to do there.
Also, he had mentioned about the groundbreaking, I attended that, and that was a really nice thing. I believe we got things started to be built in the city. Maybe something from Black's Tire and some of the others, I know there's a talk about the ambulance and some, some things down there. Other than that, that's all we got now.
No, I appreciate you getting that section of the road through the, what was that through, the, there's some Hank Street right behind.
No, that wasn't, that was already scheduled for.
It was already scheduled somehow.
That was already scheduled.
Huh? We called and asked, we sent the tapes out last year, and I said it was basic, and about three days later, they take that location, I'm thinking, hey, that's good! I'm gonna put some.
That would have felt the state already had scheduled too.
But, uh, one other thing, and I've, I've asked you this for being, maybe being twelve years since I've asked again, but, you know, like, you go to points, you'll see roads that say no through trucks and stuff like that. This road here is dangerous for them eighteen wheelers, when they get down there, they have to make that turn on the three oh one. It is dangerous, cause they, you can't hardly see to make that turn in a vehicle. There's gonna be a major accident right down there when an eighteen wheeler uses that as a, a through fair. And that, and the training tracks delay and everything, is there any way we can ask the state or whatever?
That would be a statement, I'll go back and look, cause I've.
I've been asking before, but would y'all agree it's extremely dangerous when that, when someone. It's dangerous to make a left turn in a vehicle, well, to us an eighteen wheeler, I think that's right.
I'll ask again.
Especially with, you've got the wellness center here, you've got Trinity Behavior coming next door, you got a school down there, you got a preschool on that side of the street. There's a lot of, lot of traffic with that curb and all of that, I just, I just think if some accident wasn't happening with a eighteen wheeler that is I'm gonna use it and save a couple minutes, but that's all I got.
May I have a look in on our house on.
Yes, sir, that's one of the houses that Glenn had mentioned earlier, um, we have eleven unsafe houses that we've given the birth, park, and said that's gonna start demolition, and that's one of the houses that's on that list, on four, five, and eight.
David, I had a run-in with, uh, two or three of your officers one night, and I gotta say, those guys were real professional, what they're doing, they, I mean, they didn't talk outside of the naked people, they were real nice about it, they went the extra mile to try to help the family.
Do you remember their names?
Well, uh, Jennings, and I think it was Jennings and, uh, two other, two other guys, I can't think of, but I think Jennings was one. Those guys went the extra mile to help that family, and, um, I really liked that, they were on the phone, back and forth, trying to help the family, it was like a little domestic violence thing, but they went the extra mile for that, and, you know, I wanna say that those guys really handled theyself that night, um, that's all I have.
All right, now, can I get a motion to close and go into executive session to discuss personnel matters? Thank you all.